I would like to call to order the school board work session. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin.
Here.
Buffalo.
Here.
Inge.
Present.
Paulson.
Aye.
Thomas.
Here.
Calagero.
Here.
Our school board work session will begin with school board goal three, interim measures number one and number two. Dr. Paul.
All right, thank you. I'm on the right one here this time. Here we go. All right, good afternoon. Madam Chair Calagero, Vice Chair Thomas, members of the board, Dr. Birdsong. This afternoon, I'll be sharing data related to goal three, both measures one and two. Just as a reminder, goal three is focused on the percentage of students in the black subgroup reading on or above grade level as measured by the SOL reading test that will increase from forty-three percent during the twenty-twenty-one school year to at least seventy-five percent during the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So interim measure one is focused on the percentage of students in the black subgroup scoring proficient, which is the at or above or on watch, in the spring STAR reading assessment that will increase from forty-three point three percent in the spring of twenty-three, twenty-four to fifty-eight percent in the spring of twenty-four, twenty-five, which would keep us on track with meeting the seventy-five percent goal. And I'll stop here because it is, it's a pretty graph that we have going on right now. So what's going, or what does the data show? The percentage of students in the black subgroup are demonstrating reading proficiency on the STAR winter assessment for twenty-four, twenty-five at one point nine points above the target for the winter already. The current data point is sixteen point eight points above the initial data point measured for this goal. So since we started measuring it and focusing on it, we've grown sixteen point eight points. Couple of things that are going well that I wanted to point out, that we wanted to point out. The percentage of students in the black subgroup demonstrating proficiency in reading has steadily increased from winter twenty-three, twenty-four to winter twenty-four, twenty-five from forty-one point six percent to fifty-seven percent, or an increase of fifteen point four percent in that timeframe. As well, students in the black subgroup continue to show an upward trend demonstrating being on track to meet the spring target of fifty-eight percent. What's not going well, the percentage of students in the black subgroup demonstrating proficiency in the winter twenty-four, twenty-five is below the all-student group by six point four points. So just a quick review, this, some of this is similar to the, to the third grade reading. Some of the same, same topics are here because this is a reading goal as well. Just a response to what we've done in the past with developing and monitoring student reading plans. There have been two thousand eight hundred and ninety-one student reading plans that were developed and implemented and monitored, leading to a ten percent reduction of students in the high-risk band of vowels, which also reads to their reading scores improving. Reading specialists are providing families with targeted resources with the master and intervention schedules. Through frequent walkthroughs and feedback, the English office continues to support schools in monitoring and adjusting their intervention schedules at the school level. With continued professional development, the English office has provided professional development on five separate cohorts of intervention providers, on evidence-based literacy interventions specifically aligned to the SIPs intervention curriculum. And each cohort received five hours of in-person training followed by individualized job-embedded coaching sessions to make sure that we're implementing that with fidelity. The English office with monitoring evidence-based interventions, they've logged over a hundred and forty-three coaching sessions to date with teachers trained on the SIPs program. And with the monthly professional development sessions for teachers on high-quality instructional materials, the English office continues to provide monthly replicable professional development to building reading specialists on HQIM and additional HQIM training from Benchmark Advance, which is our elementary school curriculum that was in line with the Virginia Literacy Act requirements. That was provided October sixteenth, December sixth, January seventeenth, and March fifth, again, to make sure that's being implemented with fidelity across the division. So to continue to see the growth, we'll continue to update and monitor the reading plans with progress data and targeted interventions for high-risk students. Provide March division-wide training has been provided on strategies to address literacy deficits, conduct intervention walks to provide feedback and coaching to ensure intervention strategies are implemented with fidelity and effectiveness, and utilize the Virginia English Language Arts walkthrough protocol to assess and refine literacy instruction in partnership with the VDOE's Comprehensive Literacy Network. And I do want to point out again that Norfolk Public Schools volunteered to work with the VDOE on that to implement a new instrument that's, that's highly in tune with the science of reading. So I'll pause there before going to measure three point two for any questions or comments you may have.
Any questions for the board?
I'll just say, nice to see the trend going up.
I'll put that back up here for you.
Yeah. Well.
Up on this one.
But the urgent going down.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So I just, yeah. Nice to see green.
And I, just on that, Ms. Moore Buffalo, you know, the, where we are with the data point now kind of puts us right back in line. You can see our red target line that was created with the data, and these are the annual data points, the fifty-eight to sixty-seven to seventy-five. And in our, we're starting to get that projection of where we, where we need to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bassin.
Yes. First, before I go, does anyone else want to go? Because I have a few questions, so I'm just posing it to anyone else who wants to jump in first. Go ahead, okay. So first, Dr. Paul, thank you very much for the presentation. I just have a couple of questions. Can you, just for, for all of us to understand, so this is all students who are in the black subgroup from grades?
Three through eight.
Three through eight, right?
For the STAR reading assessment.
Okay. So did you, and it's, you know, I second what Ms. Moore Buffalo said, you know, it's great to see the trend moving in the right direction. Are there, can you speak to some of the, the key strategies that led to such a growth in what we're seeing? And also, can you also speak to, did you notice any groups within or grade levels within that maybe were struggling more than others or really advancing more than others? Or there, did you notice any other trends within that?
So the, some of the hotspots that we're, where we're seeing the growth, I think it can be attributed to our, our higher-level focus on data. We've, we have a strong data warehouse. We've done a lot of work with data and working with teachers individually on how do you dig down to the data? And especially with the student reading plans in place now. And if you'll recall, you know, even though the requirement this year was student reading plans for students through grade three, we expanded that to also include grade six. And some elementary schools have done grade four and five as well because that's coming. So we wanted to prepare for that. And just creating a more immense focus on the data and the specific student needs is where we're really seeing that growth come from. You know, our reading specialists are now every month more engulfed in the data. And not only the STAR data, but the unit assessment data, the Lexia data, and the SIPs data for our younger students. And just having those resources in place, I think, has really helped us create a strong focus on literacy gaps that we had seen in the past. As far as stronger growth or maybe lesser growth, we, as presented before, we saw some really strong growth with our third grade results in our reading this year, which we had anticipated a couple of years ago, right? We said with our pathway that it was a long path, but we'll see steps. And so we're seeing that. We still have some, some struggles at, at six, seven, eight still, our middle, our middle grades. But I, we're seeing improvements there. And I think as we've started to do the reading plans with grade six students, we're, we're going to start to see more improvements there. So really looking forward to our future as we're seeing that growth now, because I, I do think we're at that, that cusp where we're going to continue to see this growth with what we have in place.
Okay. And I'm glad you mentioned that because that's exactly what I was, I guess, curious about was more, you know, we've seen the third grade and how, you know, what the progress looks like there. But really for the sixth grade and, which we know is a transition year, and then eighth grade as they get ready to transition into high school, you know, what is, you know, what are we seeing there? Are we seeing the same kind of, you know, progress? And if not, what can we do?
And we are seeing progress. So I do want to be clear, we are seeing progress, but not at the same rate as the division average. So three, four, five are pushing that division average force a little bit. But we are seeing progress across grade levels.
Okay, that's good.
It's great, yeah.
That's good, okay. And so that, that answers that question. And I really appreciate in your next steps too, that, you know, I always ask, like, what strategies are working well and what's not? And I like that, you know, you talk specifically about the reading plans and how their development and implementation and monitoring led to a ten percent reduction. And like, you know that that's, you know, specifically having an impact on that. Now, do you, did you see any areas where, like, and I know you say that in the next steps about making sure that these practices are being done with fidelity and all of that? Is that?
Yeah, so I think we've, I think we've honed in on the specifics that we really want to enhance across the division with what we have in place with the curriculum, with the skills that we're focused on, with the professional development around the science of reading, that now it's a matter of that fidelity issue. So the schools that have really, 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 like, focused in their, their hardcore and their, their, deep down into it, we're seeing, we're seeing solid growth. And now making sure across the whole division with, you know, schools that might have some long-term subs or some newer teachers, making sure they have the same, the same immense focus and the ability to do it. Because, you know, our teachers that went to school and have the degree in teaching reading, of course, they're going to be stronger at, at putting this in. So now is, is how do we spread it out more with our resources that we have?
Did you, were there specific barriers to implementing these strategies with fidelity that, you know, stood out to you or?
No, I, I think just the barrier that we see often is time. So, you know, and one of the things, again, that we were able to do as a division was with our reading teachers, there's a required VDOE training they have to take, and we were able to use our all-in funds to pay a supplement to those teachers so that we can value their time, where other divisions weren't able to do that. So that helped us get over some of the barriers, just pre-thinking, you know, what would be more supportive.
And I have one final question. So within the black subgroup, are students that also have IEPs, how are they progressing?
So they're, again, they're progressing, but not as, not as fast as others.
Okay, all right. I thought you said something. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Anyone else? Thank you.
All right, so this one will be a little quicker because some of, some of the, the next steps and everything are very similar. But again, I want a chance to celebrate the results here. As Ms. Moore Buffalo pointed out, these convergent graphs, right? This one's going, going down, which is what we want to see in the graph. So measure three point two focuses on the, the percentage of students that are in the urgent intervention, which is the lowest range you can be, which means we really need to focus on students in this, in this area. And when we started, the, the spring last year, it was thirty-six point six percent. We wanted to get down to twenty-nine percent this year. And as the graphs show, we've, we've hit that mark. We've exceeded that mark already, in fact. So we're in a, we're doing very well to hit the final mark of this goal earlier than what we anticipated, which is really our, our hopes here. So as the data show, the percentage of students in the black subgroup has declined from the fall to winter STAR by another two point one points. And the target continues to be met for the spring goal with our current data. So we didn't see a bounce back or anything else. We still saw continued declines in the amount of students in urgent intervention within the black subgroup. What's going well, urgent intervention students in the, in the black subgroup is almost seven point eight points below the target for the winter administration. So we, we, we're, we're in where we want to be here. The percentage of students in the black subgroup classified as urgent intervention has also steadily declined from the fall of twenty-three, twenty-four to the winter of twenty-four, twenty-five, and is now twenty point nine points lower than the fall twenty-two data point, which is, which is really a great place to be. And then finally, our students in the black subgroup are nineteen points lower for being in urgent intervention than the initial data point for this, this goal. What's not going well, similar to the, to the at and above or the, the on target, the students at the urgent intervention is higher than the all-students by three points. So we've closed this gap. And we'll talk more about gaps when we talk about goal four, but we're still not leveled where, where we want to be with that. And then I'm not going to go through the status because it's, these are, these are the same, the same because they all focus on, on the reading. And same with the next steps, it's all focused on our, our reading and literacy intervention. So just really about the data there. So I'll pause here if there are any further questions or comments.
Judge.
Sure. Dr. Paul, thank you so much for the, for the information. It's good to see some progress for African-American students in Norfolk Public Schools. My question lies in, so with the resources that you're allocating to parents for interventions, what's the engagement rate?
So that's a hard one to tell as far as the engagement rate goes. We don't, I don't have collected data like on how many parents come to literacy nights, but those are items that are discussed when we do the data meetings at the school level. Most of the interventions that go home with parents are in paper format as well. So it, there's, there's no, I don't have a tracking method for that in place to know their specific engagement more than what the principals have at each school for their literacy nights.
So there's, there's no way to measure the effectiveness of what you're giving the parents to help them intervene in their child's reading?
There, I don't think there's a way to measure, to separate, separate out that specific measure, to know if that's the one thing that's effective or not with, with what we're sending home. Because again, even if they're using it, we wouldn't be there to monitor the effectiveness of how they're using it.
Of course. But you don't gather, like, surveys, no data? Like, you say, you don't count the people that come to literacy night?
The principals do.
Oh, the principals.
Yeah, so the principals, centrally, we don't have it. Because the principals organize their literacy nights to happen across the division. So those are discussed, like, at the school-level data meetings that we house. But I don't have that, that kind of a data point with me because I haven't collected it.
Okay. Do they send that to the central office?
It has, we haven't requested for it.
I'd like that. And Mr. Inge, to add to your question, just as a best practice, for example, especially with younger readers, if we have parents just reading to their children, that, that makes a significant difference in, in children reading to their parents. And so there are other things that, you know, of course, are put in place that we wouldn't be able to, like, monitor and be able to report back how effective that strategy is. But we do know, like, for example, that's a best practice, and that's something that we have encouraged our parents to do.
Thank you. And if I could add as well, actually, a memo's going out tomorrow about our summer literacy. So, so elementary students in pre-K through five will be taking home books for the summer that are, that are gratis from the division and from, from sponsors that helped with that as well. So each child will be able to take five books home in the summer as well to add to their personal libraries.
Good, thank you for that. Both of the questions at this time.
Ms. Bassin.
Thanks. So what do we know about the reduction in the percentage of those requiring urgent intervention from the spring of twenty-three, twenty-four to the fall of twenty-three, twenty-four? Like, do we specifically, like, I guess, what, what strategies over the summer or what was different that moved students from the urgent out?
So I, again, I think it was, you know, some of this accord is with our, our third grade scores in the, in the early literacy interventions that have been in place now for three years solidly for our students. We, you know, our summer programs have been well-attended in the past. The, the, really just, I, I think the interventions that have been placed have been consistent now. You know, so it's no longer teachers learning them. When we start the school year, they're on top of it. And we're, we're ready to start because, you know, this is our fourth year of having Lexia. It's our, you know, fourth year of doing the, the early literacy in the SIPs curriculum. It's our, our fourth year of having interventions in place, and there's a comfort level now that we're just seeing so the, the teacher practice is stronger and stronger each year.
And were the, are the participation rates the same from last year to this year? Are you seeing any big differences there?
Yeah, we, we still run to, you know, low to mid-nineties with our schools. And if, if we notice that a school is not at a high participation rate, we contact that school and make sure that they're, they're having their students test.
Okay. And then similar to what I had said, you know, I appreciate with this, with the action steps and the strategies that you've included, you know, and I think maybe this kind of piggybacks on what Mr. Inge was just kind of referring to because, you know, I, I think it'd be great for us to know how you are evaluating the strategies that you are putting in place and what's having the greatest impact toward the progress that we're seeing. And that's, you know, that's something I ask about every time we do the monitoring session. And I like that, that for this particular one with the reading plans that you're able to see, like, exactly what that impact is. And I think it'd be great to see, you know, which one of these strategies has the greatest,
Right.
impact that's really moving forward so that if we needed to invest our resources and, you know, or adjust our practices so that we can better, you know, accelerate the progress that we're seeing.
Yeah, and our, our main, our main literacy tool for intervention is Lexia. And, and our teachers use that data, and our principals use that data, and our reading specialists, and our reading, our, our English Language Arts team use that data. And they do comparable data on it too, to see is, is there growth? Where's there growth? Where's there not growth? So it, we, we do, we do monitor that data on the regular.
And is that something that you could come back to the board in a very high-level way, say that we are seeing as a result of Lexia that we have seen this amount of growth, like, you know, overall, like, I'm just asking for?
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, and I, I understand what you're asking for. I, I think, I think we enter danger territory though because we have four or five different solid intervention tactics that we use. And to, to say it's this one?
Well, I'm not, yeah. I'm not suggesting that, right?
But, but I mean, I, I think it's, it's really a, a match of, we've got a good recipe going on right now. And with all these ingredients we have together, we're seeing the, the growth in achievement and the decrease in urgent intervention that we've been planning for. So I, you know, we do monitor usage, we do monitor, you know, you know, alignment, even still with the STAR data, like, we started the year off showing the, the alignment with, you know, the, the, you know, students who are in the top two tiers in the passing of the SOL test. We keep monitoring that to make sure that our tools are making sure we're marching towards the right target.
And I think, like, so as you just said, you know, you have four or five key things that are, is part of your recipe, for instance. And here we see, you know, a longer list of four things, you know? So it might be good for us to know, like, okay, these are the real main four strategies that are really leading to this great progress that's being seen. And, and that might help us understand a little better, you know, which, you know, because there's, there's more than four or five here, which is good. I understand that, all these little things. But of those, these are the real, you know, top strategies that are leading to, to that kind of, you know, growth that we're?
Well, and realize though, the, like, when we talk about these, when you really look down into it, some of them are around the same strategy. It's around the professional development and the monitoring of usage of a strategy.
Yeah, okay.
So even though the, the list is longer, like, like, on the, on the next steps, there's two on HQIM, one's about monitoring it, one's about professional development. So it really is just honing in on those, you know, our, our curriculum, the use of Lexia, the use of our early literacy tutors, the use of our SIPs curriculum, and, and the interventions that we have in place. Thank you.
Oh, excuse me.
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Inge.
That's okay, no problem. Dr. Paul, so we're seeing some, we're seeing some positives, but we're also seeing that the achievement gap is still wide between African-American students and compared to other subgroups in Norfolk Public Schools. What are the long-term goals? What are the long-term strategies to address it? Because it's been years that it's going on with the achievement gap. We're making progress, but what are some of the long-term strategies that you are going to be doing?
So I, I appreciate the, the question, Mr. Inge, and I'm, I'm wondering if you would mind if we table that to the next board meeting? Because our goal four that will be going over in the next couple of board meetings is specifically on the gap groups.
Okay.
So I'll be addressing that in those meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
I look forward to that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Thank you.
Agenda item two point zero two, discussion of the CTE annual plan proposal for school year twenty-five, twenty-six. Mrs. Goshen.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and Vice Chair, Dr. Birdsong, and school board members. Thank you for the opportunity to give a brief overview of the CTE annual plan for school year twenty-five, twenty-six. In looking at what you have, you have provided with a full copy of the plan, and please feel free to ask questions as we move along. The presentation in it of itself is just to give you an overview, but by all means, I am ready to answer any questions you may have. The Perkins Five Plan mainly takes a look at how do we support students as they grow academically, they grow in their technical knowledge, as well as their employability skills. We want to make sure that we give them a full piece of the pie when it's work-based learning, technical skills, and as well as academic. One would not sacrifice the other. They all work in tandem to ensure that we're preparing all students, college, career, civic-ready, whatever post-secondary endeavor they choose to pursue. Some go on to military, some go on to college, others go on to the world of work. There's a mixture. Most of our students we have go on to college, and right behind that is a large percentage that go into the world of work, and we have a good percentage that go into military. We know this because we are required to survey and follow up with every student who have graduated as a completer the year before. So for example, in school year twenty-five, twenty-six, we will be surveying everyone who graduated this coming June. So, well, no, this coming May. I'm used to saying June. So this coming May. Looking at what we have, there are seventeen clusters in the state of Virginia in terms of career clusters. Nationally, there are sixteen. These are the ones that we offer within the school division. When you look at certain clusters, for example, business, marketing, finance, those are three different clusters, but for the sake of presentation, as well as honing in on our resources, we put them in a cluster together. So business, marketing, finance, they're individual clusters. STEM and renewable energy are individual clusters, as well as education and human services. We provide pathways and courses within everything that you see on the screen. That is done at the middle and high school level. CTE, in terms of Perkins, covers grades five through twelve only, mainly middle and high school. We have a couple of the KH three-eights that have CTE courses, but mainly Perkins, when you think of that, that's grades five through twelve. Some of the things that make up all the program that we have without reading it to you gives you an idea of some of the things that come into play. A rigorous and relevant technical and core instruction to go hand in hand, work-based learning, industry credentials, sequence pathways, which are very important. We don't do randomizing in terms of see a class, pick a class, do whatever you want to do with the class. We make sure it's aligned with the students' interests, as well as high-demand, high-skill, high-wage pathways. That's where you're making sure that your students are prepared for the next level. Students have an opportunity for CTSOs, which are career student organizations. You have our partnerships and our advisory. When it comes to the Perkins Plan, you have an outline of which slots need to be allotted to certain businesses, as well as community colleges for the advisory, and that's for all school divisions. Also, we have a lot of post-secondary transition support. We're preparing for our students for high school and beyond. When you look at what work-based learning opportunities we have, they're presented to you on the screen, and not all schools have the same thing. Reason being, when you're at a middle school, elementary level, you're more of a job shadowing, mentoring. As you move up to the technical center or your high schools, you may have internships, externships, maybe paid or unpaid, as well as school-based enterprises and entrepreneurships where students are running their own businesses. Your clinical experiences are normally reserved for your health and medical sciences, like your nursing teachers will go out, and they may advance accord or be at Centerra in order to complete their hours needed to go on for their licenses. We are also approved for registered apprenticeship. Those are normally our STEM, our trades in industrial, but we are expanding into education and other areas. When looking at what extracurricular or co-curricular activities we have for CTE students, these are the programs that we have. And what I like to say is our students always do very well when they go out and compete. So they are allowed to participate in competitions, but they are also We have several different students preparing to go on to national competitions. Right now, our HOSA, which is our health sciences, they'll be traveling soon to Tennessee to compete nationally, and we normally do pretty well, if I might say so myself. One that you see in the bottom left-hand is FCC LA and Educators Rising. Educator Rising will be new to us next year as we are expanding and including the Teachers for Tomorrow program. So that will be brand-new to us, but all the other ones are, are present for our students. Perkins supports us in terms of paying for students to register and to travel, because it gets pretty expensive when you're sending one group to California, one to Florida, one to Georgia. And so there's a limited amount of Perkins funds that's permissible to be used for that. We really don't like to have our students charged to go and compete when they've worked so hard to get where they are. On this particular screen, you'll get a snapshot of credentials that are offered to our students. We like to align our credentials with the pathways in which we offer. We have done a strategic shift this year where we're moving from student credentials to the highest level of credentials that's available for a pathway. So you can have, for example, a student assessment and students can earn a credential, or you can offer the actual industry credential. We are strategically shifting to all industry credentials, which mean our high school students will be taking the exact same credential as the adult. So if you're going into nursing, of course, you'll get a license, but if you're going into welding, we're going with American Weld. We have students now taking the FAA certification. That was added next year, last year, excuse me. And with that shift, there are some growths. So we are retraining teachers for that higher-level credential and also preparing student, redoing our instructional resources to ensure that we're better aligned to where we need to go. So that gives you a snapshot of what we offer, but there's so many more. In the state of Virginia, there are over 300, but we want to make sure that we have the highest level possible. That makes our students much more marketable regardless of what post-secondary endeavor they choose to pursue. When you take a look at how we're performing, under Perkins, everyone has core indicators of performance, and you have to meet those to continue to receive federal funding. What normally happens is the state of Virginia will negotiate the benchmarks and give us the targets that we must hit each year. Presented here, you have a combination of a variety of things. You look at your four-year graduation. After the core indicator, you have what the state says we must have, and then you have what MPS performance is for the prior school year. Next year, we'll get this year's. We normally meet or exceed all of them. One area that we're still growing in is academic proficiency in science, because that's related to SOLs, but we have been growing and gaining. This is for all students who are considered CTE completers. Those are individuals who participated in CTE, they've met, met the graduation requirements, as well as they've gotten credentials. So if you look at where it says non-traditional program concentration, that tells you, how many students are we really preparing for a non-traditional career that is less than 25% of a particular gender? That may happen to be in there. I won't read them all to you, but the plan gives you all the information you need to refer back, and I can answer any questions. But we're pretty proud of the progress we're making, but we do understand we have a long way to go, because each year, things change, and we want to make sure our students are prepared for what's emerging and not what has already been. Next, we have to take a look at the credentials earned by school year and the percentage of completers. And as you can see, from '22, '23, '24, we've had a drop, and I want to explain how that has taken place. When you have testing, your testing window impacts things, but also your testing pool. And so if you have a decline in enrollment, then your testing pool is a lot smaller than what it would have been in previous years. Also, if you look at 2024 students, those are the graduates from the years of COVID and the pandemic returning. And so our numbers didn't return the same. Also, when you look at when students are testing, a large number of students are in lower grade levels, and so they will not be able to test until next year. So for example, if you had 7,000 CTE students this year, and if the bulk of them are at middle school and ninth grade, your testing pool wouldn't be higher, because most of them would test junior and senior year. So as they move up, you will see more. The other thing that you saw last year, a larger number, was recouping, so to speak, those who were unable to test 2020, 2021, and 2022 for being out. And so as we shift and move and have more students, we'll have a larger testing pool. When you look at the percentage of pass rate, we normally hover around an average of 70%, depending on which group of students have tested, meaning I'm looking at licenses versus students doing assessments. Also, the shift in the ones that were offered. You normally do a little bit better if you're offering student-level assessments. When you move to licenses and higher level, then it's a year before the students really get into the swing of, okay, I need to know a little bit more than when I needed my entry level. So most of our students now will be testing more of junior, senior year. There are no testing, there's no testing done in ninth and 10th grade, because those are reserved for assessments. Our licenses will move junior, senior year. Also, taken into consideration, some of our tests will require them to be 18. So for example, in 2024, if in pharmacy I was 17, I have to wait until this year to test. So they wouldn't be included. So when you shift to a higher level, come some nuances that we have to work through, but I'm very proud of the direction we're taking, because we're choosing to rise to the occasion of ensuring when students walk away, they walk away ready. Not that an, an assessment or student entry would not prepare them, but to go into nursing, to go into engineering, we really want the higher level so our students can be globally competitive. When you see this chart on the right, you're looking at how many of our high school seniors who are completers leave with a CTE credential or industry credential. We're normally right at about 95%, because they, those individuals from last year, they had multiple years to gain them. So some may have started out early, some may have taken more than one. So we want to make sure that we're exposing students to credentialing, but we're making sure that it's within the pathway where students can get the higher level versus a lower level. Also, we've gone back and we're redoing our pathways to ensure not only is there dual enrollment in every pathway, but the credentials are in every pathway, and students are better prepared versus waiting to senior year to just pop up and take it. Now we're starting to build it in ninth-grade year, there's a certain level of, of information you receive. 10th-grade year, a certain level of information. Then you're going out and you're getting hands-on, work-based learning. So I've had a chance to see it, I've had a chance to hear it, and now I have a chance to do it, and then I take my certification, which is helping them to be better prepared to know the scenarios and everything that's on a credential. When you look ahead at where we're going, I'd like to talk a little bit about where we are as I wrap up. We had a great opportunity to expand some pathways this year. We fully opened up our aviation and aerospace program that is going very well. We have been recipients of several grants from different programs. This week, we're notified that we received grants that will help us build out K-12 computer science across all platforms. So not only are we looking at programs to bring onboard, we're looking at the resources to support and sustain that. And so to help us with sustainability, we're making sure that our advisory and our partners are well-versed in the beginning versus saying, oh, we have a program, can you help us? It's, we have a need and interest for our students. Would you partner with us to help build it out? And so in doing that, we're now able to bring onboard a Grow Your Own Teacher Empower Professional program, where our early childhood education students and Teachers for Tomorrow will be able to work towards an associate's degree, as well as high school, as well as credentialing. If those students so choose to continue on, they can move into a four-year program with hopes of them coming back to Norfolk Public Schools to be teachers. We're also working with the state and some other entities to bring onboard a teacher-apprenticeship program for students who would like to go the non-traditional route to teaching. So we want to make sure we have options and opportunities to expose our students to various professions. Other things we're looking for, college, career, and civic readiness expos in partnership with all of our business partners. Our students need to be exposed to a variety of things, so they have choices, but they're well-informed about the choices. The next thing, our innovative flex spaces. We are upgrading our STEM labs and other labs, because technology is changing rapidly. We cannot keep pace, but we want to make sure our students are exposed to as much as possible, and then we utilize our partners to keep pace, because they have the businesses, they have the bugs, and they have the areas where students can go for work-based learning, and they can learn on the technology of today and tomorrow. Dual enrollment initiative, as I explained earlier, we will make sure dual enrollment is in every pathway. Our goal, in collaboration with core content, is for our students to be able to earn a career certificate or an associate's upon graduating from high school. We're doing a rebranding campaign. People don't know what they don't know, so you need to make sure they understand it. A lot of times, we're having to change the mindset of VOTEC, vocational education, to explain. We're doing higher-level STEM, we're doing higher-level career and technical education that's leading our students forward. The Credentials Academy, as I explained, we're taking a strategic shift. There will be bumps and bruises, but we're putting in new resources and new training for teachers. When you go higher level for credentials, your teachers need to be ready. And so we need to make sure they are well-versed and prepared, so they can help our teachers, our students master. We're going after national accreditation for our CTE programs, higher-level standards for all, so when our students transition, they transition being well-prepared for whatever lies ahead. And finally, but of course not least, we're making sure that we're aligned with VDOE's new accountability system of the three Es. And I want to make sure we understand, we are building a very strong and robust career and technical education program that's meeting the needs of tomorrow. So although there's a new accountability system, we do not believe in chasing mandates and chasing that, because you'll be chasing it all the time, because they're changing. We're doing what's needed for children, so that they can be successful at whatever they pursue in life, and that's the best thing. And if you do that, you'll always be ready for whatever accountability system that may come our way. Lastly, we have the budget of how things are paid for. When we look at the budget for Perkins, we're looking at this year's budget as the allocations have not been put out by the federal government or the state as of yet. And so looking at where we plan on spending money, the bulk of our funds will go to capital, equipment, and technology. That costs a lot of money, it costs a lot of money to run CTE, but it's well worth it. We look at personal services, I always joke and tell everyone, it's not personnel, it's personal. We very rarely add salaries to CTE plans unless it's work-based learning, and when you see the plan, it has one work-based learning person in there, it's extended support and stipends for teachers, because CTE requires them to work a lot outside of their contracts and during the summer. And so some of the stipends are included. You have contracted services, that's listed there, and I've already discussed cap or two overlay and equipment. And that concludes all that I wanted to share. I know it was pretty quick, but I wanted to give you an overview, so you have a narrative to that plan that you saw, because sometimes it's just page after page, and they all run together. So I'm free to answer any questions that you may have.
Ms. Mark Buffalo?
Hello. Hi. You mentioned that there are some areas that students can test, but they have to be 18 years of age.
Yes, for example, pharmacy tech.
Right. So if I'm a graduating senior, but on a September birthday, right? So are those students able to come back and test? And if so, do their pass rates, are they included in the final, if that makes sense?
Well, what, how we do it now, if you're 17 and you're in pharmacy tech, you graduate in June, you can, and your birthday is September, you come back in September, you're now a postgraduate, so those numbers will not go in there.
Not be included, okay.
But we do provide them the opportunity, and we pay for them to come back and take the test.
Okay.
And we provide Summer Academy, you'll see posted in our summer school program offerings, the Summer Academy or the Credentials Academy, that's for students who may have already graduated, and they can come back and they can get remediation of whatever refreshers, and then they can test. And we have several students who will take the opportunity to do so, although they've moved on to another phase in life.
Yeah, I was just glad to hear that, because I didn't want that to be a barrier for someone. I'm not going into that, because I won't be of age to, you know, test.
Yeah, we normally really work with them and stay connected, and the parents truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Rice, did you have any questions?
I have a question. It's on here. Do you just press the, okay. I have, in regards to your performance standards, I understand you said your academic proficiency in science is lower than what you want it to be. Is there any steps here?
Yes. The, sure, the academic standards are SOLs. So whatever the division is using for SOLs, for example, Mrs. Henderson, Bruce Brady and his team are phenomenal in making sure that our students are continuing to grow. And so when you see on that performance standards, reading, math, and science, those are the SOLs. They just pull from the SOL data. So it's not a separate test that CTE students will take. So whatever movements and improvements that the division's making, it will be reflected there.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Just proceed.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Goshen, for that great presentation. I have a couple of questions, and if we could go to slide eight, so my questions can be around slides eight and nine primarily. So.
Give me one sec. Slide eight.
Yeah. So the comparison between the Virginia Perkins benchmark and the targets, and then where we are. So we are excelling, it seems like, in some areas, far greater than what the Virginia Perkins benchmarks are. And can you, can you speak a little bit as to how those targets are established and how, what you attribute the great progress that we're seeing in our division in that area, in those areas?
Sure. The core indicator of performance, that comes from the federal government, so that's part of the Perkins Plan. So every year, at the beginning of the year, when the new plan comes out, they give you an example of exactly what the indicators will be for the next year, and Virginia will set what the targets will be. So they will send to us what it is for next year, and then we know what we need to work towards. But again, as I said before, we work to build a rigorous and relevant program, so that regardless of what the target is, we're not having to shift to chase a number, we're building out what we need to do for children. And sometimes, I'll be honest with you, sometimes we hit it dead-on, and sometimes we're off, and we have to go back to the drawing board, and that's when we have to bring our building representatives together, our teachers, we get student input, and that's when CTAC becomes very, very important, because there are times we may miss the mark, that there's been a shift in engineering. We're not engineers, but we go to the engineers and we say, hey, listen, here's our curriculum, this is the blueprint for the test, we're missing somewhere. And they are able to zero in and say to us, this is what's wrong. Welding, I don't know, small, from tigs or anything else, but I know where to go, where someone will tell us. And so that's when this becomes very important, that you allow your business community to see it. And so in, in September, when we start our first CTAC meeting, I just lay it all out on the table, and I go, hey, we did very well here, but we're really not doing what children need. And then they will tell us ahead of time, we hired a group of students, Kenyatta, they came in strong, or this is what you've missed, or this is what has been missed, or something new is coming down the pipeline, you're putting too much resource in this area when you really need to be here. And IT is very good at doing that for us, because they'll tell us the changes that are coming.
That's great to hear. And so specific to, and you mentioned earlier about being ready for any accountability system that comes, and we know that there are changes happening, happening on that front.
Exactly.
But specific to our district, to this school board, you know, we have our school board goals. Can you speak to how the And we know that there are changes happening, happening on that front.
Exactly.
Specific to our district, to the school board, you know, we have our school board goals. Can you speak to how the work that you're doing here is aligned to the, the school board goals that we've established?
Well, our strategic plan and work with Dr. Paul is aligned with the strategic plan of the division. So when we look at student excellence, we talk about how would these fit into that? When we talk about recruitment, when we talk about workforce development, that's all of us. So we want to make sure that we don't have 15 plans that we're following. We, when we plan for the year, the strategic plan is there, and we're looking at exactly how can we go in and support. So if we talk about student excellence, then one of the goals would be ensuring that by June 2026, our students are all exposed to some form of dual enrollment within X, Y, and Z pathway, increasing that number. Also, when we talk about workforce development, we're talking about students and teachers. And that's where the Teacher for Tomorrow program came in. So when we look at strategically planning and being ready, we look at from a student perspective as well as a teacher perspective. Because if you're not growing teachers and having them ready, then you won't grow students. There's no way one will succeed without the other. So I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, so, well, sort of, but I appreciate, I mean, you helped kind of set the, set the stage for my next question. So you talked about, you know, increasing, like for instance, dual enrollment. And for these offerings that we have, are we, are we seeing increased participation in the programs? And through the expansion of, like for instance, dual enrollment or work-based learning opportunities, are we seeing more students participating in that?
Yes, so when you look at here, work-based learning, we're at about 77% of students participating in work-based learning. Dual enrollment, about three or four years ago, we had a handful of students at one school. Now we have over 100 CTE students, over 300-plus other students taking dual enrollment. So we are growing at a rate that's faster than what we were doing several years ago. And what we're trying to do is ensuring that we're working with Todd Water Community College to crosswalk our programs so that when we bring on a class, it is transferable, but it's also leading to an associate. It makes no sense to bring on a course for a student, and it leads nowhere. So we want to make sure it's aligned with VDOE's CTE competencies. They will get TCC credit, but then if they go on to ODU, NSU, NEU, that it's able to transition over. But the key is to make sure that you have the resources in place so that students can earn it. What's the sense of offering dual enrollment if students are unable to access? They have no support, they cannot pay for it, they cannot get the textbooks. So when you put a plan in place, there's a lot of peripherals that you have to address first before a student can be successful. Otherwise, it's not worth the paper it's printed on, and we don't believe in fluff. If it's not good for kids, I'm not going to waste your time asking you for it.
Great, that's great. Anyone? Anyone else before I?
I did, I did have a few questions.
Sure.
So after they graduate, what data do you track with the students?
With our students, we are required to contact the students once they graduate. So for example, within the next two or three weeks, we are responsible for contacting the high school, the high school graduates from June of 2024. We have to assess and report federally, where, sort of like, where are you now? And you have to survey them to find out whether they felt that the CTE programming, a system, was getting to the next level. Did you go to college? If you didn't go to college, are you working? Did you start your own business? Are you in the military? Whether or not they happened to go to college or go into the world of work that, of the program of study they had in high school. So every student that completed our CTE program, we are responsible for contacting them. So what we do is get all of their information, the state sends us the database, we split them up amongst their teachers. Normally, the teacher they had the year before is the teacher who contacts them because they're familiar with them. And you pull out all stops, you contact them on Instagram and send your number and tell them you need to call them. You have to think about, we're talking about college students now, they're off doing whatever they really need to do to be successful. We call them, sometime they come in, you sort of have an app together, you send them the survey, they respond to it. Because we have to report that data, and when we report it, it comes back to us and report, and it'll tell us, 55% of your students went on to college, 46% went to work, X number went into the military. So that's why I'm able to say about 6% goes into, will go into the military because that's our trend over the last couple of years. So we contact them and we find out where they are. And if they're not, we can invite them back as post-graduates. So we have several students who are at the Technical Center who come back to take up a new trade, or they can go into our adult program.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Lucie?
Yeah, and so you talked a little bit about, you know, the business partner, our business partners and industry leaders that, that you're working with. Have we increased the number of business partnerships that we have to offer, not only provide expertise, but also provide the work-based learning opportunities?
Yes, you will get that information, I believe, Dr. Paul, is that April? We are doing a, we are really looking at reconstituting a lot of our business advisories. So not only do we have CTE, which is a CTE advisory, we are required to have an advisory for each one of our pathways that we happen to be nationally accredited. So I'll take nursing, and we're going through pharmacy accreditation, and we will be going through automotive. So you have to have an advisory specific to that area. So you have CTE, then you have your national advisory, then you have your core course advisories. So we are expanding because we're going nationally accredited, so therefore we are expanding. But we can always use more partners. You never have enough experts at the table.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, are there any partnership agreements in place for like, let's say I do welding? And after I've completed, passed the test, and to just keep going in the workforce because we know many people are going to be retiring from the shipyard? Do we have agreements with partners here in Hampton Roads to keep that continuity and continuous workforce? So as soon as they graduate, they have a guaranteed spot of employment at the shipyard for them to make a livable wages?
What we have is, we do a program called Hire Our grads.
Okay.
And the students who have gone through our CTE program, they go through mock interviews first so they can be ready to go into. So they just finish mock interviews. Then we bring together businesses who will come in and interview our students to be hired. So I'll take Centerra, for example, they love our nursing students. So they will come in and they will interview our nursing, our medical, and some other students for hiring. Norfolk Public Schools does the same thing, our early childhood education students. Once they complete the program and they take the parapro and they pass, some of our students have been offered jobs as paraprofessionals. Virginia Ship Repair Association holds an industry day. Students who have gone through trades in industrial, they come in and they bring various shipyards and affiliates to interview and hire our students. Newport News does a lot. And so while we do not have guaranteed agreements, what they do is they support the training of our students. So they know the students are well-trained, they come back and interview them, and many of our students are being hired. And if they're not hired right off, it could be because of age. Sometimes they'll pay for them to go to school until they turn 18. Others will place them in an apprenticeship program.
And that's the data we'll get in April?
Uh, no, what you get in April is our CTE advisory, the new members who would like to be part of it.
Okay.
You'll prove that because the school board appoints the advisory committee members.
Okay, so where would I get the data for how many students have graduated from the program and have successfully been employed?
We can.
In one year?
Yeah, we, we can provide that, and so what you would want is the most recent data. So you would look at June's data, and June will tell you what the students have been doing since they've graduated. And then we have not, we just finished the mock interviews, so no one has done their hiring as of yet. But we can give you examples of students who have gone on and been hired at several different places by which business members.
Awesome, thank you so much.
And just a final question, you mentioned, mentioned the Hire Our grads, which I know you've done for the last couple of years. You know, a great event where they come in, and are, are there plans to do that this year? And is there a date that we could?
Hire Our Grad has taken on a new form for this year because it's normally held in May. And the businesses were ready to do it in May, but we're getting out in May. So what they have done is they're doing industry days where they're coming, for example, Virginia Ship Repair will hold an industry day where they will bring all of their members, representation, representation of their membership to come to interview students individually. Then there's a separate day that Centerra will come and they will interview. So we will not have the large event because they want, they want to do it in May, and students will already be out of school. It's the juniors, seniors, and the seniors will already be gone. So they're going to work in a smaller group, but students will still have the same opportunity.
Great, thanks.
Ms. Turn.
Just wanted to say thank you so much for your participation in the Lake Taylor CTE and you being able to clearly articulate to the community what were the plans. So I just wanted to personally say thank you for that.
Well, thank you so much.
To the group, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item 2.03, Special Education Annual Plan Proposal, school year for the school year 25, 26. Dr. Glenda Walter.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you all hear me? Yes, all right. Well, good evening, and thank you once again for the opportunity. Good evening, Chairwoman Calagero, Vice Chair Ms. Thomas, school board members, and Dr. Birdsong. As I began this evening presenting the division's federal fiscal year 25, fiscal year 26, Special Education Annual Plan, Part B, flow-through application, which is a federal grant application. Again, it is a privilege for me to lead special ed programs and services in Norfolk Public Schools. And as I get started, I once again have to thank my finance colleagues that always collaborate with our office in setting up the budget projections and the application. So that said, as we get started, just a few things about the application. As similar to the Perkins Grant, the school board members did receive a copy of the actual application. And tonight's presentation is an overview of that process. We do have several new school board members, so I ask for grace if I'm repeating information for those of you that have been here. If it's something that you don't need, please feel free to hurry me right on along, all right? So this, this application is required by the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act of 2004, as well as the Virginia Regulations Governing Special Education Programs for Children with Disabilities. A part of the application process also requires that each locality collaborates with private schools and parents of homeschool children. And when we say private schools, we're talking about private schools in our locality where parents opt to parentally place their children in a private school setting instead of a public school setting. We're also required to review the application with the local Special Education Advisory Committee, or CEAC, and then of course ensure that the application is presented to you all as a school board and approved. And so on this slide, you see all the dates for which those are occurring, or we hope that they will be occurring. Additionally, as a part of this application process, it's required that, once approved by the school board, that Dr. Birdsong, as the superintendent of schools, certifies and provides assurances regarding Norfolk Public Schools' use of these federal funds. And those assurances are all aligned to IDEA and the Virginia Regulations Governing Special Education Programs for Children with Disabilities. Namely, that we must ensure that we provide a free and appropriate public education for every child with a disability in the city, that we maintain their individualized education programs. We educate students to the greatest extent possible in, in an inclusive environment or in their least restrictive environment. Certainly that the division develops policies and procedures designed to prevent over identification or under identification or disproportionate representation of students with disabilities among a variety of different categories. Discipline or disability category being just a few examples. And certainly that we provide equitable access to our students and our staff and other program beneficiaries for the division's use of these federal, federal funds. As we begin, just for context, each year, the division submits a December 1 Child Count Report. That Child Count Report is required by federal law to be submitted to the Virginia Department of Education, and every locality in the state must submit that information. As of our December 1 Child Count, Norfolk Public Schools is educating 4,658 students with disabilities in our division. There are 13 disability categories, and as of our December 1 Child Count, Norfolk Public Schools is providing educational services to children with disabilities in 12 of those 13 categories. The only exception being deaf-blindness, which as you can imagine is a very, very distinct disability category that requires that the child have both a hearing impairment or be deaf, and also be blind. And so that's usually a very, very low incidence population. Additionally, in terms of the application itself, as you heard, as I began, I refer to it as a flow-through application, and that is simply because this is federal funding that flows through the federal government to the state and then on to the localities. So the federal government does not award these monies directly to any locality. They award them to the state, and the state distributes them based on their formulas, with our December 1 Child Count being one part of, of that determination. Funding is contingent upon final award amounts, and so anything that I propose here is based on directions from the state, which is each year that they direct us to complete an application based on level funding. So with the assumption that we hope to get level, level funding. But it may be that the final award is slightly more or slightly less, that is all dependent upon the state. The application is one big federal application, but there are multiple components or sections of the application. So as you hear me go through the presentation, you will hear me reference those. As we began, the Section 611 portion of the application is the grant funds that we are permitted to use for our school-age students with disabilities, so our children that we serve in grades kindergarten through 12th grade. That section also has a coordinated comprehensive early intervening services, CCEIS, or a comprehensive early intervening services, CEIS, set aside. Currently Norfolk Public Schools is a CEIS set aside. In other words, we are voluntarily setting aside those funds to address issues that we've had in the past with disproportionate suspension of African-American students with disabilities. The state has not currently identified Norfolk Public Schools as a mandated set-aside division, but we have maintained those intervention services since we were moved off that list. Because full disclosure, the state removed school divisions from that list if the area of disproportionality was disciplined following the COVID-19 pandemic. And as you can imagine, many schools were closed, and so students were not in school. And then of course, that would result in a reduction of disciplinary, disciplinary actions. The other required set aside, and this is required for all school divisions, is the proportionate set aside. And what that is, is the portion of the grant funds that the federal government requires that we place as a set aside to support children that live in the city of Norfolk but may not necessarily be enrolled in Norfolk Public Schools. So again, those are those children that are homeschooled by their parents or parentally placed in private schools. Our obligation to those students includes at a minimum child find obligations, meaning that if a parent suspects that their child has a disability, regardless of whether they're, they're enrolled in Norfolk Public Schools or not, if they are resident of the city of Norfolk, then Norfolk Public Schools is obligated to conduct those child find evaluations and determine if the child would or would not be eligible for services. If they are eligible services, we make what we call a FAP offer, an offer for free, appropriate public education. And if the parents elect to take us up on that offer, then they would enroll their child in, in our schools, and we would provide those services. If they determine that they do not want to do so, then what the proportionate set aside requires is that each locality sets those monies aside, and each locality gets to determine what services, if any, we will offer to our private school and homeschool children. Norfolk is, like many other school divisions, generally speaking, we provide speech-language services to eligible students under that they are not served with an individualized education program. They are served under what we call an individual service plan. In addition to those, we would also offer some consult services around other related services if the child warrants it, all right? Moving forward, the other larger section of the grant is what we refer to as the Section 619 portion, and that is the portion of federal funds that we are permitted to use to support our early childhood special education programs in Norfolk Public Schools. And while I say it is a significant portion of the grant, when you look at the dollar amounts, you can see that it is significantly less than what the division will receive for those school-age services. We're also required to report out on maintenance of effort, which is pretty much each division has to guarantee that we're spending as much or more. So we need to match or exceed local and state funding in order to meet the needs of students with disabilities each year. And then of course, if there is a jail location within the city, then we need to assure that we provide services to students in our local jail education program. So that said, the first major portion of the grant, as you can see here on the slide, and this is simply a screenshot of the actual application, is our Section 611 portion. In column C is that main 611 portion of the federal award, or that we hope will, we will be awarded, minus the CEIS set aside and minus the required proportionate set aside. In column C, as you can see, what we're paying for or proposing to pay for in this application, which is a continuation of the previous year's application, are personnel services. So salaries and. So salaries and benefits for staff that are paid for under this grant, which does include special education teachers, pairs, and so forth. And I'll share that information with you shortly. In column D is our CEIS set aside. So again, the portion of the federal funds that right now Norfolk is voluntarily setting aside in order to continue to provide early intervening services for children in Norfolk that may be at risk for disproportionate suspensions. And then finally, in column E, as you can see, is the proportionate set aside. That's that required portion for our parentally placed private school or homeschool children. And those services are in the contract service GL line. In terms of providing those children with speech services, if they're eligible, we do not have a Norfolk-hired speech-language therapist for that position. We do use contract services, and we do have a standing contract service speech provider that has been working with Norfolk for years, but she is hired through another contract service provider. And so that's what those costs are. Similarly, in C's, all of those costs are paying for salaries and benefits. Across this section of the grant, you see in other services, the other services are what we refer to as indirect costs. And what is allowed is that each locality is able to charge indirect costs to each of their federal grants to maintain those grants, so things like payroll, reimbursement, so on and so forth. The state establishes the indirect cost rate each year at the start of the state fiscal year. The current indirect cost rate for Norfolk is 4.6%. So what that means is that at present Norfolk can charge 4.6% of each grant to maintain those grants. And so those are the costs that you see there. And then in totality, as you can see, excuse me, I got ahead of myself. In totality, as you can see, the proposed budget request, which is based on level funding, in other words, what we were awarded in the previous school year, is $7,785,763. My eyes are not as good as they used to be, so please excuse me. That said, what this section is actually paying for then, because I gave you the numbers. Under Section 611, the salaries and benefits that this is affording the Division to provide services for are for one-parent resource center educator, one budget specialist, three teacher specialists for special education, four administrative secretaries, 38 teacher positions, and 75 peer professionals. Under the CEIS set aside, those salaries and benefits cover the cost of one CEIS social worker and 12 student interventionists. And then, as I mentioned, the proportionate set aside is all contract services to pay for the speech-language therapy services for the children that are eligible. Moving forward, this next slide is just simply a visual representation of what I just shared with you. And not unlike the Division's operating budget, as you can see, the bulk of the grant funds are slated to pay for salaries and benefits so that we can deliver services to children with disabilities in Norfolk Public Schools. Then on to the Section 619 portion, which is the portion that allows us to support preschool-age children with disabilities in the Division. Once again, column C is the main 619 section. And again, it is outlined to support personnel, salaries, and benefits, and also the other services, which are again the indirect costs at the 4.6% rate. In the 619 budget, based on level funding, we were able to include some funds to support materials and supplies once we pay for salaries and benefits, and then also account for the indirect costs. So we have about $31,777.92 earmarked to support early childhood special education services. Those materials and supplies our office mainly uses to support services and resources and materials at Easton Preschool, at Fairlawn, and also Willoughby, which are the two locations that support the majority of our early childhood special education programs. We do have inclusion early childhood special education classrooms spread out among other school sites in the Division. And we work very closely with Dr. Sito's office and Early Learning and Title I to support those classrooms. And a portion of those materials and funds, materials and supply funds are assigned to my department, and then we support those isolated classrooms as they make requests as well. And then again, the proportionate set aside, the grant application now requires that we calculate what the proportionate set aside would be under each section, although it is all going towards the same purpose and in one pot. In previous year's application, it all used to go under the 611 section, and VDOE has changed that process. So as you can see, once we calculate based on the number of children that we have that may need these services, the proportionate set aside amount for 619 is extremely small. It's $976.78. That gets combined with the $103,000 that you see under the Section 611 section. And as I said, we continue to exercise our child find responsibilities for all of those children and deliver them services according to their individual service plans. And then, for this particular portion of the application, it's again, once again, a much smaller amount, so the number of positions that it will pay for is significantly less. This portion of the grant pays for two early childhood special education teachers and one early childhood special education paraprofessional. And then of course, as I said, the contracted services for the proportionate set aside. That said, in both the Section 619 and 611 portions of the grant, that there are no substantive changes over last year's application at this point. And again, just a visual of the spending plan for this particular application. Once again, salaries and benefits take up the majority of the funds. And then that is pretty much concludes my presentation. But as I wrap up this evening, I just wanted to also share with you a few highlights from the efforts and work of the department this year. You know, on the slide, you see a listing of multiple topics that we've tried to address in terms of providing learning opportunities for administrators and staff. Everything from supporting teachers around increasing their knowledge and being able to deliver specially-designed instruction, progress monitoring and data collection for IEP goals for students, functional behavior assessments, behavior intervention plans, manifestation determination reviews. We do a lot of work around post-secondary transition training. We've even, you know, delved into things like trauma-informed care and building healthy relationships between teachers and students. But of course, in terms of school cultures, just trying to keep everyone in a good place so that we can continue to do the work positively. Special permission, credit accommodations. There are additional topics here on this slide, and just want to highlight that as of last week when I was posting this to board docs, of course, our office had delivered 235 learning opportunities, so 235 professional development sessions, for a total of 524, almost 525 hours of training. And we've had a bit over 3,000 attendees. Keeping in mind that this is a lot of work, I'm very proud of the work that our office does, and I appreciate the support of both Dr. Poe and Dr. Birdsong. These are not necessarily unique numbers, meaning that it's not 235 unique sessions. Some of them may be multiple opportunities for folks to engage in a session. Some of them may be monthly recurring sessions that we do with particular groups around different topics and so on and so forth. So very proud of that work. And then additionally, likewise, we also try to partner with as many community partners and agencies as possible, some of which you see here on this slide. We work very closely with the Virginia Department of Aging and Rehabilitative Services. We certainly tap into our local training and technical assistance centers. The state provides those across the state for each of the school division's regions. Norfolk is in Region 2, and so we collaborate with William &amp; Mary T-Tac as well as Old Dominion T-Tac. We certainly partner very closely with VDOE, PTC, which is the state's Parent Education Resource Center for Special Education. And through those partnerships, we try to offer a lot of learning opportunities for families as well. So we certainly believe that if families are informed and are educated, then they're better able to advocate for their children, and that's what we want them to do, is to be well-informed so that we can collaborate and work together, you know, efficiently and positively. And so, that said, the next steps then for this particular application would be, we will be seeking approval, a school board approval, at your next meeting on April 23rd and requesting a recommendation that you approve. And then, once it is approved, when that does occur, then it must be submitted to the Virginia Department of Education by their timeline of May 9th. That said, that concludes my presentation, and I am prepared to take any questions or any discussion that you have at this time.
Ms. Moore Buffalo?
Yes. You said as of December 1st, we had 4,658
Yes ma'am.
students receiving special ed services. And so, do you know what that number is as of today?
As of today?
Because the funding is based off the December 1 count, am I correct?
Yes, they'll use the December 1 count. There has to be a cutoff date, obviously, because it fluctuates every single day. But the state does use the December 1 Child Count number as the number for any formula that they take that into consideration for. I do not have the number as of today. I can say that, you know, as of last week, when I looked at it, it was still in the 4,600.
Okay.
Other questions?
Ms. Vasey?
Oh, sorry.
I was going to ask, do you anticipate any decrease in funding at the federal level?
It is hard to, it is, yes, it's very hard to say. Over the, since I've been in this role over the last several years, we've not really had a decrease in funding. This year's award, meaning the one that we received for 24, 25, was slightly less in one of the areas, not a significant amount where we would be talking about cutting positions or having to figure out where to put positions. But it does impact, you know, how much we have left over to support or supplement materials and supplies and resources. But it's hard to say. The state's instructions annually is always to develop the application as if we're going to get level funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vasey?
Yeah. And Ms. Moore Buffalo, I appreciate that question. I think that's hot on everyone's mind as to how, you know, the potential impacts on federal funding cuts are going to impact school divisions, especially, you know, this plan and how we service our students with disabilities. So I was going to ask a similar question around what our contingency plan is going to be around that. But you answered.
Sure, the state has not given us any indication at this point of whether or not there'll be changes to funding. They do meet, the Virginia Department of Education, the special education offices, they do meet. They have a monthly special ed directors' meeting, so we had one maybe a week or so ago, last week at some point. And there was no indication that there would be any significant changes at this point.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple additional questions. So if we, so and they kind of straddle the actual plan and the narrative and the presentation here. So, the plan itself, I mean, I think we talked about this a little bit last year in terms of aligning it to our School Board goals. And I ask this question because oftentimes, when we are looking at our School Board goals and what's working well, not working well, or which groups are impacted the most or struggling the most in this case, our students with disabilities are, you know, tend to fall in that group. And so, I guess I'm wondering how we integrate that information into the plan? Or how is that, how are our goals and the status of our goals being integrated into the plan in terms of determining what our needs are for the upcoming school year?
Trying to make sure I understand the question. If I did understand it correctly, how are we incorporating the student outcome needs as a part of the application? Is that what, is that a similar?
Yes, based on, yeah, based on the results that we're seeing with the goals that we've set, the School Board goals that we've set. How is that influencing the developed, the plan that we have in front of us? Because I believe you said that there haven't been any substantive changes from last year to this year. And I guess my question is, if we aren't seeing the progress perhaps that we hope to see, how does that plan not change, I guess?
So, I think that's probably a multi-layered response, beginning with, this particular application is required in order for the Division to receive federal funds to support special education services. Like all federal grants, the intention is to supplement, you know, services and efforts of the Division, not to supplant or replace what we're already required to do. The Division's current application is, as you can see, mostly reserved for staffing. So unless we begin to have a conversation around how else the Division intends to pay for those staff, there's not a lot of wiggle room in terms of this particular plan. That said, this, you know, close to $8 million is still just a very, very small portion of what the Division spends. When you consider local and state funds, it's a very, very small portion of what the Division spends ensuring that we can educate students with disabilities in the Division. You know, I would say in terms of overall plans and how we have these discussions as it relates to student outcomes, at the end of the day, children don't learn without educators, you know what I mean? And so we want to make sure that folks are in place. The other thing that I will say about that is that as it relates to special education in particular, regulations do not have staffing outlines that are practical, I guess is what I would say. You know, they're regulatory, we can follow them, but they're not designed with best practice in mind. And so, you know, special education staffing requirements that's established by the state are not set up so that, say, you can say that a special ed teacher will only focus on these content areas or these particular grades, you know what I mean? And so a case manager can be assigned students and cover multiple grades, multiple content areas, which is why generally special ed teachers are generalists, are generalists. So, right now, what the Division is trying to do is, like everything else, make sure that we maintain right-sized staffing to meet the needs of our students with disabilities. While the Division is experiencing, I think, an overall decline in student enrollment, that is not the case with students with disabilities. So we certainly take that into account too when we consider how we use all of our funds, not just the federal grant funds. Beyond that though, it takes a lot to educate students with disabilities. It's significantly more costly than it is for our general population, as I'm sure my finance colleagues will attest to, because I'm always asking for money to support those, support those needs. To the extent that we can also make sure that resources and materials and equipment are in place, we try to maintain those. And ideally, we try to use the federal grant funds to supplement that as much as possible. However, what I will say is, as the cost of staff continues to increase, when we think about the compression work that the Division has done over the last few years, as well as the normal step increases, and of course, very generous operating budget proposals to compensate staff, we are going to have to take a look at, you know, how we maximize all of our resources, including the federal grant.
All right, thank you. So along the lines of staffing, so you talk about, you know, educating our students with disabilities requires, can require a different skill set or additional duties. And that's one thing, especially with paras for special education. It's one thing I know I hear a lot, that the duties are different and, but the pay is the same as our other paras. And so that's, I don't know how you factor that in into.
Well, I don't say at the pay, right, obviously, for the Division. One thing I can say that Norfolk does is that not every Division does. There are certain responsibilities that may fall to a special education paraprofessional, specifically like toileting, independent living assistance, hygiene support. Our paraprofessionals that do support those do get a stipend, which we refer to as a difficult duty stipend to support that. So that is something that Norfolk provides.
Okay, thank you. And finally, my question is, so on the question around have we found any identified barriers? So you talk about staffing, and we know that we have special education instructors. I mean, that's a harder to staff area. Can you first talk about like what analysis you did to conclude that there are no identified barriers?
Or, so this is a question that you had last year. We discussed it a little bit then as well. And again, I wanted to point out that this particular question, each application may lay it out differently, but the GEPA statement questions are a part of all federal grants. You know, VDOE, for whatever reason, with this particular application. And I'm certain, if I recall now, it was because they were audited at some point, and they were told to sort of flesh out those questions a little bit more specifically. That said, the question is really asking about identified barriers in our mission, policies, and procedures. And so that's how I'm able to answer that question. We have all the policies, procedures, missions, strategic plan things in place. That's not to say that there are not other challenges, but those challenges don't prevent us from ensuring that anyone that should benefit from these funds, students, families, staff, that they're not able to benefit from it because of inequitable policies, procedures, or practices. That said, conversely, implementation is a different beast. And so that's when we do start to think about things like staffing, challenges with staffing, not just challenges with getting positioned staff, but also who we're able to staff, you know. It's not a secret that Norfolk, like many other divisions, not only in Norfolk, we are having to utilize all of our resources, including, you know, working with provisionally licensed teachers, working with associate teachers. In terms of how we're addressing that with these funds or overall, I think that goes back to kind of how I ended this presentation. We know that we are, you know, having to meet the needs of the current labor market. And the current labor market may not have had as much opportunity for pre-service teaching backgrounds. Our office provides a great deal of ongoing training opportunities to try to meet those needs. We collaborate with CNI around those efforts. We collaborate with school leadership development around those efforts. We try to differentiate and tailor professional development opportunities for all groups. So like you just mentioned, paraprofessionals, we have had PD and clusters and things like that. that this year specifically for paraprofessionals. We did that as well last year. They were very, very receptive to it because that group of colleagues are very eager to learn and meet the needs of, meet the needs of our students. We've broken up training around job-like roles, things like our self-contained special education teachers, those that are going to support inclusion, secondary, you know, those kinds of things. So we are aware that there may be challenges to implementation, but in terms of a response to this particular application, that's, that's how that response came about. Additionally, as you are aware, Norfolk was part of the state's core special education assessment, or CSEA audit last school year. A big portion of that audit also required that we comb through in detail the division's policies, procedures, written practices, those kinds of things. So once again, while there were some findings from that and some corrective actions, the concerns were not whether or not Norfolk had the right structures and policies and things in place. Implementation is where we see the challenges, and that's why you see the efforts of my office and then collaboration of other offices.
Thank you.
Ms. Thomas?
How are you monitoring to make sure the needs are being met with our students with disabilities in certain schools?
Sure. It's also a multi-layered question. It's, I will say this, and then the impression is always that our office, the special ed office monitors that alone, so I think the first response to that is that that's not the case. It's certainly a collaborative effort, primarily with school leadership development, with our chief schools officer, and of course, our executive director of schools, because they are the ones that have immediate supervisory authority over principals, you know, and whether or not things are happening in schools. We collaborate in terms of providing training and guidance to school administrators, both at, you know, regular principals meetings each month, as well as at assistant principals meeting. Our office, I do have team members on our team that are assigned as, you know, compliance overview, so we do a lot of sort of proactive review, and some of those we've instituted as a result of what we've learned with the CSEA audit as well. Things like randomly pulling student records and monitoring whether certain things have occurred, whether progress is being reported, and then we follow up with schools and individually or with individual case managers to troubleshoot and implement corrective actions where we need to. We meet regularly as academic affairs and school leadership office to talk about the data and outcomes. We monitor, you know, complaints and things that we receive to kind of see where there's trends and needs. So there, it's, like I said, it's a multi-layered question. The short answer being that, that we do have a focus in our office around compliance and monitoring those things, and we continue to increase sort of our proactive measures for how are we looking at that as opposed to responding to it when we receive a complaint. So things like regular spot checks and audits, student records, review of student records, when, when there's a recommendation for long-term suspension, to see what types of supports have been provided and those kinds of things.
All right. Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you all. You all have a great evening.
Agenda item 2.04, textbooks recommended for adoption. Mr. Bruce Brady?
Madam Chair, Mr. Calasero, Vice Chair, Ms. Thomas, members of the board, Dr. Bart Saun. I'm Bruce Brady, the Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and I am joined this afternoon by some amazing members of CNI. Over to my left, on the right, we have Ms. Rhonda White, who is the Senior Coordinator of Elementary Mathematics. Over on the left, we have Dr. Tisha Jones, who is the Secondary Senior Coordinator, Senior Coordinator of Secondary Mathematics. And in the middle, we have Ms. Jennifer Lopez, who's the Senior Coordinator of History Social Science. And their offices have done the groundwork, all of the work really, for the textbook adoption, which is why we're here today, to present textbooks recommended for adoption for K-12 mathematics and for select history social science courses. The mathematics textbooks that we'll be recommending today for grade six to 12 have been approved by the Virginia Department of Education for use in Virginia schools. If a local school board chooses to adopt a textbook not on the VDOE's approved list, a local review process must take place that replicates what the state does at, at the state level. Please note as well that the VDOE does not approve recommended textbooks for any of the elective courses or for advanced placement and IB courses. Our teacher committees consisted of math specialists, classroom teachers, including special education teachers, ESL teachers, gifted resource teachers, along with advanced placement teachers for those courses. Committee members reviewed the sample materials, and they also had the opportunity to attend publisher representation meetings where the publishers presented their materials and the teachers were able to explore the instructional features and the supports available with the various textbooks. The public has also had the opportunity to provide input on all of the textbooks that were being considered. And to encourage public input, the school division put textbook information on the website. They also used the social media platforms, robo-calls, text messages, emails. That was probably it. You know, you get those calls around 5:00 or 5:15 from the folks in Dr. White's office, alerting you to, you know, what's going on. And so those messages let the public know that the textbooks were available, they were on display at the Slover Library, as well as at the Jordan Newby, Pretlow, Tucker, and Lafayette branches. We are recommending the mathematics textbooks listed on this slide for grade six through 12. At the onset of our adoption process, the only K-5 math textbook that was on the state list, it was available only in digital format. And so our selected textbook from Cengage went through the vetting process here locally as required, and will be available in both print and digital formats for our students. This slide shows the textbooks recommended for adoption for the math elective courses. And this slide identifies the textbooks recommended for the AP and IB math courses. The selected mathematics textbooks fully align with the 2023 VDOE math standards. They use evidence-based practices to enhance student engagement, and they offer step-by-step instructional strategies, differentiated resources, interactive tools, comprehensive assessments, and the textbooks support the needs of all learners and guide instructional decision-making. The next two slides present the recommended history social science textbooks for grade four and various elective courses. The VDOE plans to implement new standards in history social science in '25, '26, along with a new textbook adoption cycle aligned to those standards. And so our recommendations for the history textbooks are really, they're going to be in two parts, all right? We're recommending right now the grades and the elective courses that are not a part of those state standards. Next year, the state should conduct a textbook review process for those grade levels and courses that do have state standards. And so we would be coming back in a subsequent year to adopt textbooks to align to those courses and grade levels with, with standards. And on this slide, you see the recommendations for the AP and IB courses. The selected history social science textbooks present multiples perspectives and include primary resources. They offer scaffolding strategies to support all learners, including students with disabilities, English learners, and gifted students. The textbooks provide robust online resources and AP-aligned materials for exam preparation and technology integration. We currently have preliminary cost estimates, as we continue to work with publishers to finalize pricing. Funding will come from the division's existing textbook allocation, and all of the recommended textbooks that you saw listed on the slides have been provided to Ms. Tanner, and they're available in the, yep, so you've already seen them. They're over here in the little conference room for your review prior to your vote at your business meeting. So this concludes our presentation, and we're now happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the recommended textbooks.
I have a question to start out. Since 2019, I have had a high school student in Norfolk Public Schools. In that time, I've never seen a math textbook come home, nor have I seen my children utilize online resources. They typically get worksheets sent home, and in AP courses, they use AP Classroom. So how are we utilizing these textbooks at high school? Because I haven't seen them being utilized. And myself, I am a community college math professor, so I actually sat down and read the textbooks. I went into the room and spent an hour reading textbooks, and there's good information in them, but I just, I see a disconnect between what goes on in the classroom and the money that we're spending on textbooks. So can you elaborate on that?
So I can say that the textbooks are another resource that is available for use in the classroom, all right? As we all know, you know, what makes the difference in the classroom is, is the teacher in front of the classroom, and we provide various resources for those teachers. And so we make sure that the textbooks that we're recommending provide those resources to the teacher, that the tools that it provides, the strategies that it, that it provides or enhances are available, you know, to make sure that the teacher is just another resource to increase the effectiveness of that teacher.
So are we paying for online resources for, like, for students to use online textbooks, online assessments? Do we pay for that, or do we simply pay for the text, the hard copy textbooks?
I know Ms. White was here at the last adoption, and I believe, did we bundle at the time? Yeah, so we had both digital available as well as the hard copy of, of the textbook. Now, what happened, and I'm not sure exactly when, the contract expired, a couple of years ago?
Yes.
So our contract from the last textbook adoption expired a couple of years ago, and I believe at that time, we lost access to those digital materials, all right? The reason that those contracts expired a couple of years ago, and we haven't been able to step in and, and fill that need immediately, was because of some issues that you might be familiar with that were going on at the Virginia Department of Education around mathematics. So several years ago, right, the proposal was for math courses that kind of lost their name and their identification. There was no longer going to be, you know, algebra and geometry, but they were mixed content, starting in middle school and moving up into high school. A lot of controversy over that proposal by the VDOE. And then a new administration came in, in the state, and they wiped out all of those plans and started over again. I believe that has taken two years now, all right, in, in devising those new standards, and so we have been without some of those contracted resources that we did have from the last textbook adoption.
So, so that's great. The one thing I want to point out here is that I think we're spending too much on textbooks, personally. I...
Point of order?
Yes, sir. Okay. I had a question.
You're making a personal reference?
You're right. I made a personal statement. I am concerned that we are spending too much on textbooks. Have you ever, in your textbook adoptions, looked at open educational resources or open source textbooks?
We have, and we've, we utilize a lot of open resources to supplement what, what we're doing, all right, and, and to supplement our curriculum and the instructional materials that are available as well to, to teachers. But I believe we still feel there's a need for a textbook, especially, I would think, with our staffing, a lot of associate teachers, you know, we don't have a fully veteran staff that has been in the classroom, and so I think a lot of our current math staff benefits from having a textbook and, and having those resources available. Now, part of what comes with, with the textbooks is the professional development, and so over the summer and into next school year, the math offices and, and the history office will be having professional development on, so that teachers can effectively use these resources and, and materials that come with, with the textbook.
Go ahead.
I understand what you're saying, but they're really not using textbooks. How do you monitor that the textbooks are being used by the teachers?
So our staff is in classrooms, they're in schools constantly, they're going in, they're observing what's, what's taking place instructionally. If there is a need for, you know, if they see a, a teacher that's not using a resource that, that should be used, then they meet with, with that teacher, they provide professional development to that teacher. In math, we have math specialists in, in our elementary schools, and so they conduct PD on, on use of the resources, so...
They're using a lot of worksheets. I can, I can tell you that. They're really not using textbooks like they used to use them, and for you to be asking for money for textbooks, I mean, we have to know that they're going to be used.
Ms. Visi?
So, I mean, just for, for board discussion, I think, you know, it's, it's easy, I think we all have different experiences and, you know, wear different hats as parents, as teachers, as, you know, and sometimes we see a, a particular perspective, like a snapshot of our own experiences, that may not be the, what is happening across the division. So, you know, I, our individual experiences may not be what's happening, you know, across the division, so I just want to say that, that, you know, I would caution us from, from bringing that into this. I think the, the questions are fair, like, how often are we using the textbooks? How impactful are they? Because I know that question has come up among the board, you know, like, does every student have a textbook? Are they, do they have access to it at home? Do they have access to it in the school building? I think those are, those are all fair questions, but, you know, so I, I just want to say that, that, you know, as, as we work together, you know, our individual perspectives and vantage points can, can sometimes be different, so, and how we're using the textbooks, I think is a, is a broader question, maybe, that we need to, yeah, yeah.
Ask Ms. White and Dr. Jones to come up, and you can share how you see the textbooks being used when, when you're in...
And while they're coming up, I'd like to add something. For some of us who are a little more senior, I think, in, in thinking about our own traditional experiences growing up, you know, when we were in high school, it was turn your books to page two, do all the questions, we'll put them on the board, we'll answer them, next day, turn to page number three. That's not how teaching is supposed to happen today. We, we teach standards. We have to, our teaching has to be aligned with the Virginia Department of Education's SOLs, the standards... SOLs, the Standards of Learning for Mathematics, for example. So it is the responsibility of classroom teachers to review those standards. And of course, our wonderful central office staff, they put together information, provided to the teachers through professional development, to provide them resources that they can use for each standard. So you won't have children coming home every day, like, opening up a textbook and doing the odd questions that we used to do, or the even questions. It's just not the expectation anymore, because textbooks are not going to be 100% aligned with the standards. So it's up to the building principal and the teachers, most importantly, our central office staff, to determine what's appropriate for each standard. We've also had many discussions amongst various boards, like, there are some boards who wanted, you know, every kid to have a textbook, you know, purchase that, bring that home, also wanted a class set so that the kids could keep the textbook at home. So we are certainly open to listening to, you know, what it is you all want us to do as a school division. But I do think it is important that we do have these textbooks, because they are a valuable resource. And so we just have to determine, maybe, you know, they don't need to take the English book home, keep a class set in school, or all the math books need to go home. But I do think the professionals need to decide that, because they know what the curriculum looks like and what resources are aligned to the curriculum. So we'll let the real experts talk about mathematics. Thank you.
One more thing. And also, this is already budgeted, so we had, you know, we had the opportunity to have this discussion before, this is already budgeted, and, you know, the expectation was that we would purchase these books.
Oh, and I don't disagree with that expectation. I'm just concerned that we purchase these books and they're not being, and the resources aren't being utilized. And that is where my concern comes from, as a parent and as someone who teaches, who has taught high school, teaches college. That is my concern, that we are not utilizing all the resources that even come with the textbooks.
Right, and I, that's, yeah, I think the broader question, what Ms. DeCaligero was also just getting to. So I'd like to, first of all, be-
Mr. Paulson, did you have a-
I think what we're asking is, how can we see or determine a return on our investment? And is it going to be worth it? We're going to, if we spend this money, how do we determine that this technology is what we want?
So I don't think there's a quick answer to that. I think if we're going to address the goal for our student outcomes to improve, I would not say that one textbook is going to be that catapult. Would you agree? We are definitely moving towards the math process goals that Virginia Department of Education has sought for us to actually have as a part of our instruction. One of the resources that we are asking for is an aligned textbook. If you look at research, especially the research that recently has been shared with our state, if you're looking for a fully aligned, accessible, coherent curriculum, one of the things that you have to have in place is a highly qualified HQIM that includes a textbook. And in our case especially, we want to have that in place for our younger teachers, our more novice teachers, so that they have those research-based actual things that you're speaking about. We want them to have the correct mathematics in front of them when they're planning, and absolutely when they're instructing, and when they're assessing. And that's what a textbook can do for us. So for the past several years, our offices have had to, we've had to create our own resources. We have new standards, and we have not had an approved textbook in place. So if you're saying you haven't seen textbooks come home, although that is hurtful in some ways, in other ways, I'm saying then, they were using more aligned resources, those things that we've created. We've worked with teacher groups to create our math specialists, and we've even partnered with districts to create those resources. So those things were more aligned. At this point, we're prepared to move forward in asking for that support from you to have in place those more aligned resources for our teachers to have.
You want to add anything?
No, I think you did a fantastic job.
Ms. Masie, did you have a question?
Yeah, so along those lines, can you, could you share a little more, expand on how the textbooks are going to support our students with disabilities and our ELL, like, so specifically, you know, those subgroups? Yes, so when we were actually vetting the books, that's a part of how we vetted. We looked for those additional supports for, if it's students with disabilities, do they reference divergent thinking? Do they look for ways to support with graphic organizers? If it was an ESL, we're looking for things such as, we looked at best practices for ESL students, do they offer additionable vocabulary supports for teachers and things like? We are very looking, looking for very strategic supports for that, because we want teachers to have that when they're planning again, which is, we come into the planning sessions, and at this point, if we have the books in place, in addition to any open resources that we've already prepared that are aligned to the 2023 standards, which we are now using, we'll also have that as a resource to add to, looking for different strategies for our Ls, looking for different strategies for our students with disabilities, and looking for different strategies for our students who deserve that opportunity for enrichment.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you very much. I will move on to agenda item 2.05, Virginia Department of Education Micro Grant for Student Wellness. Mr. Paul, Dr. Paul, excuse me.
All right, I've been called first. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, DeCaligero, Vice Chair Thomas, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. I'm here to share a brief presentation on a micro grant project awarded, that we hope to be awarded MPS on removing barriers related to academic achievement. This grant has been written and it's, was just formally completed yesterday, so you'll have the full grant before you vote on it at your business meeting uploaded. And it was written to address social media and internet overuse and abuse at our EELCs. The grant is being awarded by the Virginia Department of Education through the Office of ESEA Programs and Parental Engagement, so that's the Title I, which is why we also just recently found out that it had to be presented and voted on by the board, even though it is a smaller dollar amount. The purpose of the grant is to provide information, training, and strategies to students, staff, and parents related to the internet and social media overuse and addiction. The total amount of the grant is $10,635, and it is required to be presented to the board and voted on by the board. This is a collaborative grant between the Department of Student Wellness, ELC schools, and the Office of Early Learning, Title I. The desired outcomes are listed on this slide and are the goal of the grant funds in an effort to create a greater focus on academics by curtailing the social media usage. Interventions provided include a mindfulness program, a speaker to address mental health concerns associated with the internet and social media addictions, a webinar to address the addiction, and the creation of a professional development library for each of the schools with materials related to the mental health concerns caused by the addiction. These interventions will be provided at all four of our Equity and Excellence Learning Centers with the use of the awarded grant funds. I said brief, I meant brief. Thank you for allowing me to share this information. Dr. Moore, Senior Director of Student Wellness, and I are here to answer questions that you may have.
Are there questions? Dr. Martin.
So, thank you for this presentation and applying for this grant. My question is, while we're selecting specific schools to implement this, is there an opportunity to expand that in the future?
Absolutely, great question. So our hopes are, by doing like a mini pilot with the grant, is that if it's, if we see the positive intentions that we want, that we can replicate the programs elsewhere.
Ms. Masie?
Yeah, and so along those lines, I think that's a great, great question, and I had a similar one. What metrics are we going to be, or what tools and metrics are we going to be using to see how, what impact this particular grant is having?
I think the primary will be the cell phone infractions at schools.
Oh, okay. The cell phone infractions, okay. And I know, and I asked that because I was thinking about, and I haven't looked at the panorama, you know, because I know that's also, I know we're still issuing that at the beginning of the year for all of our students, right?
Right, beginning of the end.
Across the whole division. Is there any, are there questions specific to, I mean, do you know, I mean, I can't-
I don't think they're as specific to, like, social media and cell phone addiction in there.
Okay, so I was just, I was just, but yeah, I was curious. Yeah, I was curious to know, though, yeah, how we're going to be determining what impact this grant has. I think it's a great opportunity, great, I think our kids need this digital safety lesson in social media use, and, you know, I'd like to know how we're going to make that decision in the future, if we want to expand it.
Absolutely, and we hope to learn from this grant.
Come to the microphone, Dr. Moore, please step to the podium.
The people at home want to hear you.
Yes. What's going to be very important?
Dr. Dennis Moore, he is our Senior Director of Student Wellness.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
One of the other metrics that they were really focusing on when we were looking to get this grant was parent engagement. So it's going to be threefold. It's going to be addressed to students, it's going to be addressed to staff, and it's going to be addressed to parenting, parents. So we're going to have some after-school, during-school activities to bring in some information on internet addiction, and also the mindfulness program. And they've already been using that mindfulness program, and they came in early in the year and they spoke about it, and we sort of use it as a pilot. It's working well, and so now we're going to roll it out into a couple more schools. And like you guys were saying, we want to pilot this thing, and things that work well, we want to move them into other places as well. And, I mean, right now, internet addiction, social media addiction is a huge issue that is impacting a lot of students' families.
Is the webinar, is that meant for parents or teachers?
That one is more meant, that one is more meant for staff members. We have a, an organization that we work with, PESI, and they have webinars that they've put out another. And so at the beginning of the year, because this is a conversation even before the grant, we had the training through them on internet addiction, and it's not really parent-friendly. So we're going to work with probably KMSL Behavioral Health, who's already indicated that they have something we could work with them on to prevent to parent, to present to parents. Then we'll have the program for staff, and we'll be working with students as well. And the mindfulness program is more geared towards the students, but staff and parents can use it too, that's part of the contract.
Okay, so at this time, you don't have any, I know it's funny to talk about using social media to tell people to get off social media, but you're not utilizing social media to get in touch with the parents? So just saying at this point, like, you're not utilizing, like, social media tools, like videos or anything to get, help get the word out to the parents?
Well, our thing is, there's appropriate uses of social media in the internet. And then there's the mind-numbing 24 hours a day staring at your screen issues, and that's, that's the thing that we're addressing. We're talking to parents and saying, there are appropriate uses, but you need to limit it, you need to know what they're looking at, you need to have some control over it. I mean, they use it for all kinds of educational things, and it's wonderful, but the bullying, the airdropping stuff, the texting, I mean, don't, I mean, with the, this came to our attention because of the executive order that limits social media use and phones at school. And some kids were expressing, oh my gosh, you know? And so what we wanted to do was provide them with some resources and-
Right, I just was wondering how you were engaging the parents in this process, because they really, in my opinion, parents set the tone at home, and unless you get the parents on board, it's hard to get the students on board.
Yeah, well, that's why we tied into the four schools that are in that program, so that we can tap into what they're already doing. They're doing a lot of parent engagement activities, so we're going to have, one of the things in the grant was developing a professional development library that will be in the school, that the staff can look at, parents can look at, flyers, things that can go home with the parents. But they're already having regular meetings, bringing parents in, and so, I mean, this is something we could share with them and follow up on.
Okay. Thank you. This is Dr. Martin.
What I like about this is, looking back on this past year, when we were preparing for the school year, how the governor laid down, like, okay, it was like a light switch, one day you can have it, next day you can't. And we've had some discussion, I don't know how publicly, but it's come up, about, instead of taking it away, teach the students how to use technology properly, and that's what I really love about this program, and that I hope it does make an impact on our, you know, our students and our families, and really helps them be more responsible.
Anyone else? Doctor, Mr. An?
Not doctor yet.
I'm getting my doctors and mister's, and everybody all screwed up today.
So with this grant, are any other school districts applying for this grant as well? Is it just specifically just for Norfolk?
It's, it's all across Virginia. There's, people are taking different-
Got you.
Areas that they're addressing, but this was just a hot topic for me. And so, and others that I've spoken with across the division, I thought it'd be a good use of money.
Okay, follow-up question to that. Is there, has there, or is there a similar grant to show, like, from other school districts and some of the outcomes they've been able to produce?
Well, we're all starting right now at the same time, so, and I don't, I'm not-
So no other grants? Like, not this specific grant, but no other grants to address the social media and misuse and?
Are you talking, has there been previous studies on this topic, or are you talking grants going on right this second?
So you're applying for this grant, correct? So, and other school districts across Commonwealth of Virginia are applying, correct? Are there any other school divisions, not even just in Commonwealth of Virginia, but in any other school divisions in the United States, that have done some similar project to this grant and shown the outcomes that we're looking to have to decrease the cell phone infractions?
Not necessarily cell phone infractions, but some research in developmental psychology has, talks about the problems that are associated with internet and social media addiction. I mean, it's a pretty, it's pretty well-developed research.
Mr. An, I would suggest we could probably provide him a copy of The Anxious Generation. That book, we'll give you, that has a lot of research that might be helpful.
I think we all need to get a copy of that.
Yeah.
Do we all want a copy? Does everyone want a copy, or everybody on the board?
It's just like, Oprah, you get a copy, you get a copy. There you go.
And I'll take it out of your budget.
Do we have copies?
You have my permission.
Good, yeah, all right.
Maybe that's where I saw it. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. The gentleman?
At this point, I would like to address Mr. Paulson's point of order. A point of order is for rules or procedural violation. My opinion was neither, so your point of order is not recognized.
I challenge your ruling.
You can challenge it? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, challenge is improper, or I appeal your ruling as provided in Section 24, Roberts Rules of Order. It is a motion that must be heard, it cannot be amended, nor can it be laid on the table. It takes your explanation to the board of why you made this ruling, and that they will then vote to affirm or defeat your ruling, and it requires a second.
I'm not certain I'm following.
I know, I-
What was the point of order?
Point of order was I gave my opinion.
But what is?
A point of order, maybe, for rules or procedural violation, of which giving an opinion, I have ruled is neither.
The point of order is about the fact that there is, it is, the point of order says there is a violation. It's not a stipulation of a, any category. It is a violation, and that's what the point of order was about.
Is there, is there, Mr. Paulson has made a motion?
Oh, let me read it to you.
Is there a second?
The point of order was-
I don't know what the rules violation was. I don't know what the rules violation was. Which is interesting considering that Dr. Martin did express that she, that she liked the micro grant, and other people this evening have also expressed, uh, their excitement or their concerns.
I don't know, the, the point of order.
Are we gonna discuss this?
Well, no one has seconded the motion.
Uh?
No one has yet to second the motion.
I second, let me hear you, I second it.
Under Section 24, it's your turn to explain, not, not the, uh, the board, but the chair is explaining their, their reason for.
My reason is that a point of order is called for a rules or procedural violation, uh, giving an opinion is not, is neither.
Are we in discussion now? What are the, um, consequences to this?
None.
Just a second, now we're reading.
Is it just for recording it on the minutes?
I'm sorry?
The consequences, is this just to be recor, is this to be recorded on the minutes, or is there another consequence to this?
We're, I think we're complicating this, because it's, it's not about whether, like, I forgot the categories, there is no categories, it's saying there is a violation, and the violation was referenced. And, and, again, you're, you're, you're the one that's supposed to be explaining this, not, not, it's not open to the.
I, I have explained it to my satisfaction, thank you. Are we done with this?
Yeah.
Discussion?
Yes.
She's the chair.
Are we?
Uh, we are done.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Tanner, there has been, I'm not entirely sure what the motion on the floor is, but to sustain Mr. Paulson's point of order, um, Mr. Paulson brought the motion, and Ms. Thomas seconded the motion. Uh, would you please call the roll?
Nay.
Buffalo?
Nay.
Inge?
Nay.
Martin?
So, I did hear you voice your opinion.
Right.
Just not sure that it's.
It's not a rules or procedural violation, and.
Okay, so I'm gonna say no.
So did you, so did I.
It was kind, we, we regularly com, sorry, discussion, it's not discussion anymore, I'm just gonna stop.
Was that nay? Paulson?
Aye.
Thomas?
I'm gonna say nay, she explained it.
DeKalbogero?
Nay. The motion just passed. All right, moving on, uh, Agenda Item 3.0, Future Agenda Items. This is a new agenda item where I would like to give board members the opportunity to briefly present a, a potential future agenda topic, um, in, in, and the, should be two minutes or less. And then we will, we will see if there's a consensus among the board members to add this to a future agenda item. So, I'd like to open up the floor to anyone.
Aye.
Oh, Basin, and then Mr. Paulson.
So, these are, these are not new agenda items, these are just, um.
They, they, they could potentially be new agenda items or something you would like to see on the agenda.
So, I, I have, um, four things that I think need to come back to the agenda. They are our norms and protocols that we reviewed with, um, a governance training. Um, I think we need to bring them back, review the edits that, um, that were made, and adopt them. Because right now, I think a lot of, some of the things that have been going on, again, you know, we need to just bring them forward and, um, uh, adopt them so that we can move forward. The second one is that we are in April, and we need to, um, come, uh, develop a, uh, collaboratively develop a superintendent evaluation timeline, so that we can also have that in order, and then, um, and most, you know, most of my, are around planning, uh, like, for the retreat dates and, uh, moving forward. So, that's, that's really all I had, I just wanted to bring those, especially those two things, around our norms and protocols and timelines to the forefront.
Okay, is there a consensus that we should bring our no, norms and protocols back to a meeting and, uh, review edits and, and get them adopted? We can just, can you just simply say yes or no?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, and developing a superintendent timeline, is there agreement that we should revisit?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Could you explain that again, I, I just heard something about.
To collaboratively develop a superintendent evaluation timeline. To work as a board to get that timelines.
We're supposed to evaluate the superintendent by the end of June?
Yeah, we're required by law to do that.
No, I, I'm not disagreeing, I just didn't hear the, the last part, I just wanna make sure.
Oh, okay.
The timeline's there, so.
Mr. Inge?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay. And then, the retreat dates, I think they're, they're January, Ju, July eighth and ninth, or the Monday.
It's Tuesday and Wednesday, July eighth and ninth.
It's Tuesday and Wednesday, so.
So, that's confirmed?
Uh, we are waiting for Dr. Birdsong to confirm her availability.
Found out yesterday, so just give me just the date to look at my calendar.
Mr. Paulson? You had, you.
Uh, yes, I, uh, as I understand it, our protocols right now is, uh, we can submit for a upcoming meeting, a subject or subjects, and that is going to be changed, we talked about changing it. But right now, the ones I submitted to you are not on the agenda, and they should be by our current protocol, or norm, or wherever it is that we talked about changing.
We also talked about adding this as a point on the agenda, which is.
Right, so there is a current policy, excuse me, that says we can send it, and it should be on there. And I sent some, and they're not here.
Do not believe it says that anyone can submit, anyone can choose what the agenda items are. The agenda is set by the Chair, Vice Chair, and the Superintendent, so they do have discretion over what gets to put, gets put on the agenda. But please, uh, bring up your items you would like to see added to future agenda.
The first one is the declining, uh, board culture. And the second is the, um, problems with the, that are present with the Subcommittee since we've taken it over.
Can you, can you expand on, oh, I'm sorry, Ms., Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you expand on, um, the items that you're adding, give a brief rationale, uh?
Um, since, since, on or about the 17th of this month, there's been incidents that have involved some of the board members, doing things that are beyond their scope and their responsibilities, their role and responsibilities, and we've not discussed them, they need to be discussed, because we're just not heading in the right direction. There are problems with the committee, uh, one is the plan that came from the Chair, uh, has two events, that they're gonna have a, a meeting for a couple hours each, four hours, two four-hour sessions where the Superintendent.
Aware of this plan.
You'd have to ask the Chair, because she's the one that sent the email to all of us.
Shared what, uh, the Superintendent.
Oh, the perspective, okay, but that was just a perspective.
Right, that's, that's what, um, the consultant had shared.
Right.
I was just resharing information.
Yes, yeah, you were resharing it, that's what, that's what I was clarifying.
So, that was shared with the board?
Yes, I did share that with the board.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm sorry, I thought, I was thinking of, but that didn't, that, that was just you messaging.
My, I thought I, but, but it was directly what you expressed to me, without any.
Okay.
That's one thing, and then the list that was provided for the 32 individuals has one person that is missing that we discussed.
And that will be discussed in closed session.
I'm just, right, I understand, right, I'm not going with their name, I'm just going with the problem that we're.
But that's already on the agenda.
Yeah, that's on the agenda.
It's not a future agenda item.
I'd still like to, uh, schedule a meeting with the City Council.
Yes, we, we are, we are, we need to nail down our availability.
Want to get a date? She sent an email.
Did I?
No.
No, I sent an email with dates, but I have not heard back from everyone.
Yeah, she sent it last week, I get that email.
Yeah, she sent it last week.
Okay, I'll have to go back and look again.
It was like last Wednesday.
I will resend the email directly after this meeting with the three dates. But I have expressed, I have sent the email to the board at least one time, I will resend it tonight.
Thank you.
So, you're, you're expecting a, you gave three dates, and if we don't send something, you're, you're gonna wait for that, or do we have to pick?
I was asking which of the three dates was worked for people.
Okay.
I reply, did you get my reply?
Yeah, I got yours.
Yeah, and I responded as well.
I didn't get, I didn't see the email, so you can resend it.
I will resend it.
But I believe part of the problem for Ms. Thomas is that some, some, uh, of the emails I've noticed, and I, I sent it to you, is her email is incorrect. They're using her private email instead of her NPS.
And I, and I did, I did rectify that situation.
Okay, well, there's one that just came out, another email two days ago that still had her private email on there.
From me?
No, from another board member.
Okay, yes, somehow in the Microsoft system, both, she, she, her name is attributed to two different email addresses, and you have to be careful which one.
The name, it just kinda.
Right, all right, so, uh, Mr. Paulson would like to discuss declining board culture, although I do need to point out that it was hi, it's his opinion that people have overstepped, it is not the, necessarily the opinion of the board. Um, and, uh, just wanna clarify that point, Dr. Martin.
So, I think what this ties into, and I, it's on my list, is that we need more board training.
Yes.
So, I think that that is a top priority for us, so that we can stop this.
Right.
Right, I agree with that.
Yes.
I agree as well.
I agree with that as well.
I'll second.
All right, so, we have some agreement about more board training. Um, we will be discussing problems with the Steering Committee membership this evening. And what about declining board culture, or should, or should we just put this under training?
That's what I suggest.
Under training and co, yeah, coaching, yeah.
I disagree, that is not the point, to get more training, is, the point is to get the discussion and the recognition from the board that we need to change.
Again.
The training that we have gotten so far, in fact, there was one training this week, the past week on Wednesday, there was two, three board member, correction, two current board members and one past board member that were present on this webinar, and it pointed out a different approach than what we're getting from V S B A. I'm sorry, V S B A gave this, it was, uh, some examples of how we should evaluate ourselves. That's what we need training on, is, and under, not training, but understanding that we're not evaluating ourselves correctly.
Well, that, that, and to be clear, that, the training that we received on the 12th was an initial training. When we have regular governance training, there's a lot more that goes into that. And so, a lot of, that was a V S B A webinar that we attended, and so, that was, um, you know, something that will come up in ongoing training, just to clarify that.
All right, so there is agreement that we need to focus on training. Is there, I don't, I, is there agreement that we need to be discussing declining board culture at this point?
Not until we have a mediator, an independent person, and you're guiding us in that conversation.
I agree, I agree.
And so, that does not make a future agenda item at this point, but the training.
Is.
Does.
Is, yeah.
Okay. All right.
I have a, uh, one, can we, um, start on a draft or a meeting calendar for next year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I had several, but I think the list is long enough at this point, so.
All right, the board will now go into a closed executive session.
I move that we go into executive closed session.
I'll second.
All right, uh, Ms. Moore Buffalo brought forth the motion to go into closed executive session and was seconded by Dr. Martin, I was looking at you, so.
Which one?
You not have to.
Dr. Martin.
You not have to read the certificate?
That's when we come out of closed executives, the resolution.
I think you have to read it going in, so you know what subjects.
Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
I'm gonna give you to read the.
She has to read.
I'm read the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion.
Thank you.
Read the motion.
That the members of the School Board of the City of Norfolk go into a closed meeting for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of Section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the School Board pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A1 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the session are the discussion of the performance of a specific employee, further discussion of candidates either previously appointed to, or for possible future appointment to the School Board's Educational Facilities Planning Steering Committee, and discussion of personnel, including today's personnel agenda. Consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters require the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A8, no, 2.2-3711A8 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the closed session is for legal advice in connection with the matter set above in subsection A of this motion. Basin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Inge?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
DeKalbogero?
Aye.
I said it too.
All right. We'll go with Ms. Basin, right, the second.
Ms. Basin, okay. I'll read the certification. A resolution certifying executive meeting of the School Board of the City of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the School Board of the City of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the School Board of the City of Norfolk, that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the School Board of the City of Norfolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such pub, public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the School Board of the City of Norfolk. Basin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Inge?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
DeKalbogero?
Aye.
The board now needs to vote on the approval of the Personnel Docket. Need a motion?
I move that we approve the Personnel Report as presented.
I'll second.
The, uh, Ms. Moore Buffalo, uh, made the motion to approve the Personnel De. Ms. Moore, Buffalo made the motion to approve the personnel docket, and it was seconded by Mr. Inge. Is there any discussion? Ms. Tanner, will you please take the vote?
Yes. Bassin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Inge?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
DeKalbajero?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.